Good evening, welcome to the lower Molltown Board of Commissioners stated advertisement meeting. Today is November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Welcome everyone. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and my nation under God, in the discipline with the virginity of all.
To let the public know, we will have an executive session to discuss a legal matter after our meeting with our. So just to go over a few ground rules, again, we welcome you tonight and we wish you in advance a happy Thanksgiving and peaceful and beautiful fall as we feel this cool weather coming in. I could actually say I really like it. So we want to tell everyone that we appreciate your interest in coming to our meeting and we value your input that you want to convey to us and we appreciate you all coming tonight. We have two very exciting things going on tonight with our officers and and its lieutenant appointment. So we're all really excited about that. And I just want to tell the advise the public that if you are would like to address the board, please come up to the podium here, it's brown, and state your name and address for the record. So when and I can ask, please, if you could direct your comments to the entire board, not just one staff member, one board member. In the interest of everyone's time, Ruth usually keeps the time for me and we like to keep all comments to approximately three minutes. Please keep in mind also that this is a business official business meeting. And if you have any other additional questions or comments that don't pertain to an agenda item, those will be taken and addressed at during the non-agenda items during our meeting. And we ask everyone to please be respectful and kind and considerate of one another. Thank you very much. I'd like to start. Chair recognizes Commissioner Joe Canale, Chair of our Safety Committee. Joe.
Thank you, President Kurtz. My first order of business for this evening is the LMPD Lieutenant Employment Agreement and Appointment. Attached in our member books, we all have the employment agreement and have had the opportunity to review it. Is there any comments from the board, Ole Miss? Any comments from the public, which you don't have a copy of this? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve approved employment agreement of Lieutenant Huttig as described.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve to approve the agreement of Lieutenant Julia Huttig. All those in favor, please consider it. Please, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Julia.
Congratulations. Next up, we're going to have the swearing in by District Judge Tom Mer.
Great honor to be here, President, and we're so community.
All right, just real briefly about now Lieutenant Julia Huttig. She's joined up here by her mother Edna and husband Ralph. Prior to joining LMPD, Julia grew up in the Norristown area, attended Norristown High School, got her bachelor's degree from Westchester University in Criminal Justice. And she did over eighteen years prior to becoming a police officer in Montgomery County, adult probation officer. She was a probation officer and then a supervisor. She's now been with Lowermoreland Police Department for over eighteen years. During this time, she got a master's degree in public safety from St. Joseph's University. There are various roles in our in our department, FTO, FTO, OIC, sergeant for five years now, various other duties, and she's been very instrumental in our community policing activities that we take part in. I'm very excited to have her with our administrative team here and she's a great addition to this role and she'll be doing a great job. I'm very confident of that, so.
Okay, please just hit that with me. I, Julia S. Huttig, do solemnly swear.
I, Julia S. Huttig, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the law of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Lowermoreland.
The township of Lowermoreland.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I pledge to uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Pledge to uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex.
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules or regulations, policies and procedures.
I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Lowermoreland Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Lowermoreland Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Second item on my agenda for this evening is the probationary appointment of police officer. In October, the Board of Commissioners authorized a conditional offer to Officer Michael Longo. Having met the conditions of his offer letter, Officer Longo began with LMPD on November fourth. The final step is for the board to approve his probationary appointment by resolution. District Judge Tom Mer will be intent swearing Officer Longo. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution number two four fifty-two, appointing Michael Longo as a probationary officer in the Lowermoreland Police Department.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number two four fifty-two, appointing Michael Longo as a probationary officer in the Lowermoreland Police Department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. The eyes have it.
Mike Michael up with his mom is going to be coming up here, joining. Oh, his brother as well. So this is our newest officer, Michael Longo. He brings us up to full complement. So we are now at twenty-seven officers with his swearing in tonight. As I said, joined by his mother Joanne and his brother who was a police officer in New Jersey. Michael was born in New Jersey, eventually moved to Newtown, Bucks County, where he went to Council Rock North High School and graduated. He is a certified personal trainer, so fitness is very important to our department, so welcome addition there. He graduated from the Temple University Police Academy where we had our prior Chief Scarrato as one of his instructors. So he comes highly recommended by Chief Scarrato and Officer Koblianski, who also trained him there. And we're very excited to get him started and like I said, brings us up to full staff, so we're happy to have him along.
I, Michael H. Longo, do solemnly swear.
I, Michael H. Longo, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the law of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Lowermoreland.
And the township of Lowermoreland.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
And I pledge to uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
And I pledge to uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex.
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
I'll obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Lowermoreland Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Lowermoreland Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Anybody here for Julia or Michael, you can follow them out. We'll take some pictures downstairs. If you really want to stay with me, welcome to that.
All right, the next item on my agenda is the LMPD Right-to-Know Officer. Apparently Chief Smith and Manager Hoffman serve as the Township Right-to-Know Officers. With Chief Smith covering requests for police records. We separate this function from our other Right-to-Know requests in November of two thousand and twenty-two as the department is updating its policies for validation. The standard suggests that the non-sworn staff should not be the direct Right-to-Know Officer for police-related requests because it requires frequent access to records which are governed by several state laws, including Right-to-Know and the Criminal History Record Information Act. Now that Lieutenant Huttig has been appointed a few agenda items earlier, it is Chief Smith to pass this important role on to her. After Lieutenant Huttig's appointment, Manager Hoffman will advise the Office of Open Records so they may update the Township Right-to-Know contact information. I would like to make a motion. Any discussion on this? Anything from the crowd? None. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lieutenant Julia Huttig as the LMPD Right-to-Know Officer.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded to appoint Lieutenant Julia Huttig as the Lowermoreland Police Department's Right-to-Know Officer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. The eyes have it.
Chief Smith, you're up.
Do thank you for appointing Julia into that role. It's been something that's just it's a it's a good role for the lieutenant to have. Just put it that way. So my report has been, my full report has been submitted. However, some some of the matters here, we did have just over eighteen hundred calls per service in the month of October. So a pretty busy month for us. Our staffing updates, just to keep everybody aware of what's going on, our three new hires that we had prior, they're all in their own vehicles now. They're approved for solo duty, which is fantastic for us. Obviously with Officer Longo getting sworn in tonight, that brings us up to our full staffing that I mentioned, the twenty-seven officers that were approved for. And then some upcoming things with Lieutenant Huttig's promotion. The plan is to have a new sergeant promoted to replace her at the December meeting, as well as a new corporal that would replace whichever corporal gets promoted at that December meeting. Those lists are already done, they're certified, we have those active lists. So that will be coming up in the next meeting. So they should be the the last big changes for the year, which has been filled with quite a lot of change about. So we're very excited to have some new leadership in the township with the Police Department specifically. Some crime and service updates for us with the political season in full swing during October. Some of our biggest programs that have some increase in thefts relate to political signs. That was about as as bad as it got, thankfully. Election Day was relatively quiet in the area. We, as the Police Department, did only have one call. I know there was some other matters heard of and dealt with, but that did not require a police response. So our officers are all fully aware, there's many existing statutes statutes, excuse me, that don't allow us to be at polling locations. We're supposed to avoid them unless we are called in there. So like I said, I was happy to report with at least what could have been happened or could have been expected to happen. We just had one noise violation that was pretty much resolved by the time we got qualified for us that way. Had did have a bunch more frauds in the month of October. I know I brought this stuff up before, but again, for anybody listening, you know, if you can use online bill paying or if you do handwritten checks, just put them directly in the post office mailbox inside the post office. Because we do still have a lot of fraudulent checks being taken. Shred your personal documents, just be cautious of unsolicited emails, texts, et cetera. Everybody's getting them, including myself. We get them on a daily basis. Always want to look at who the address is from to do some things that can help protect us and our citizens. A big highlight, we did have several burglaries in two thousand and twenty-three that were occurring in Pine Road Corridor. All of those were solved and related to two subjects. Both arrests were handled and we also cleared a bunch of arrests from other agencies and surrounding departments that also had the same group committing those burglaries in their township. So some great work by our detectives to help get those cleared. And that was addressed with some some warrants and everything and they were served in October. The community events, the only one we had was the big township opening house celebration, which was in October. It was a great day for the Police Department. Obviously, we had our canine demos, which were fantastic. Some station tours, some giveaways. It was a great event, well, all around for Fire Department, the Township, and many of our different services we have here. Just to keep everybody up to up to date with our bus patrol, we are now up to five hundred and ninety-seven violations. So we are averaging about three hundred a month, still at varying locations. Our traffic officers are doing a good job, you know, monitoring them and making sure that the system is working like it's supposed to and anything close, they are not issuing those violations, they are disapproving those. So I think it's very good. I've had a few talks with our traffic officers to make sure we're we're of that mindset where we're not trying to make this an overburden for anybody. I want to make sure that any violations are true violations where they had plenty of ample time to stop the bus stoplights. So we're at about an eighty percent approval rate of that six hundred roughly civil citations that are issued out. And again, like I said, it's still many, many different locations within the township that these are occurring. It's not one area we can point to. So but it's been a good program overall and hopefully in these first few months, it'll be a lot more education and people are going to pay attention to this. And, you know, like we do hope our numbers go down at some point, so we're not having these.
Is this outfit on all buses throughout?
Every one, every one of the buses for our Lowermoreland buses. We do have other buses from different school districts that come through town. So I don't know if all of those are associated, but we get the violations that occur in Lowermoreland Township specifically. So and they're on all of our first student buses.
Right. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right, thank you very much, Chief.
I can step out, take some pictures and come back up.
Next up on my agenda is Fire Marshal Shally.
Evening Commissioners.
Just a couple of quick things. Under emergency management, we had a outstanding edits conference this year in two thousand and twenty-four. We had over four hundred attendees and we're looking to make two thousand and twenty-six even better. We had Chief of the Rets Services, Mark Schumaker, Ted, Chief Fire Chief Ted Mittelman and I. We attended a Zoom conference call with the county resources or with the county, wherever the resources be put in place in case there was any violence in the polling places. And we'll have one probably sometime in the middle of January to get ready for the swearing in. Under fire investigations, just one correction. On Sunday, October thirteenth, the Simpler Lane address is the wrong address. It should be thirty-six seventeen. And I wanted to thank Chris Platts, Abington Fire Marshal, Happer Fire Marshal Kate Valensky, and Fire Chief Ted Mittelman for assisting. I was away on a personal matter. As you see, in the month, we had a couple of fires in and around the township and also with mutual aid. And again, I want to thank Mark, Ted Mittelman, who were past Fire Marshals, and for Happer Fire Marshal Kate Valensky for assisting me and the investigation. UNOs are, Jen and myself are working on all the UNOs. We want to get, we want to try to get them cleaned up. Hopefully by the end of November, beginning of December, so we can start fresh for the new year. And we are currently working on a full fire drill alarm test at Carson Terrace due to they have a brand new alarm system, which was in service, out of service. We have a final on Thursday, a final full building test. And I'll be taking some of the daytime guys with me. Any questions?
Thank you.
No? Any questions from the public?
No, thank you.
Chief Shale.
Good evening, everyone. My joint report was submitted to both the communities. Instead of going through everything, just highlighted a few real quick things. We attended the open house fire prevention that was hosted by the Huntington Valley Fire Company and the Burnathen Fire Company, as well as the Township and the Police Department. Numerous fire calls, which we're going to talk about a little bit throughout the month. We've been spending a lot of time finalizing the tower ladder bit out, and I am happy to report that it has arrived and is sitting next door in the fire station. So if you get a chance, get a look at that. Everybody seems to be very pleased with it and we're thrilled to get it going. We have some training scheduled, which is going to keep us busy probably for about the next month and a month and a half before we put it into service, make sure everybody's proficient at it. And we have some factory training that we have to do before we can really get into the heavy aero type training that we want to do with it. With that said, fire calls of interest, the Fire Marshal mentioned about thirty-six seventeen Suffering Lane Fire. But that fire actually came in as an alarm system and it was dispatched both Huntington Valley Fire Company and Burnathen Fire Company to it. They did their normal investigation and when we go into a normal investigation for alarm system, hopefully somebody's there. If they're not, we can only do the best we can from the outside. Ted had a gut feeling that something wasn't right in that place. They spent a little extra time, they found an open window, were able to enter into the property and found an active fire on the second floor. So we would have locked, that would have been a major event that we didn't detect, but we do the best we can while we're there. Thirty-two hundred block in Maple Room for a garage fire. We had a garage fire as a result of hot ashes. Bob, is that where you rolled that ass?
Who's on the floor?
Bobby.
I'm sorry.
The garage fire, that was hot ash, you rolled that one?
Hot ash in the basement.
Okay. We had actually a pretty serious fire that was held to a portion of the garage, which was good because we had in-station crews. We had just got back from working on a major cardiac arrest call. Both fire companies were involved with that, as well as the ambulance. We were probably back in maybe ten minutes when that came in. We got in there and quick with the crews in station, got a great hit on it. And again, that proves, you know, the value of having people in station for these fire calls. Same thing with the Kirk Room. We had twenty-five seventy-one Kirk Room. We were dispatched for an appliance fire. Turned out to be a basement fire with a dehumidifier in it. When we were going in on that call, they told us there was numerous people in the building. There was actually a family party going on. I think we had fifteen people that were in the basement at the time of the fire. The homeowner actually removed the device out of the building, put it in the backyard, ended up with smoke inhalation and doing that. We don't recommend that. But they were tempered throughout. Again, we were a little light, even though we had staff on, but we were able to mitigate that incident. Getting some statistics for the month for the, I'll give you the Burnathen and the Huntington Valley both. We had seventeen hundred and ninety-five EMS calls for year to date. In Burnathen for October, we had seven calls. In Lowermoreland, a hundred and fourteen. And outside of those areas, seventy-five. And our total monthly calls were a hundred and ninety-six for the EMS side of the house. For the fire side, we had for Huntington Valley, we had thirty-seven calls in Lowermoreland, seven in Burnathen, one call outside, with a total of forty-five calls for the month. And we're currently, as of October thirty-first, at three hundred and seventy-three calls. And just to give you a little point of interest, you know, we have this second ambulance that we put up during the daytime and we try to cover for what we call on another call. So if a call comes in and our ambulance gets committed, a second call comes in, that's what the leadership's supposed to be helping us out with. When we put that program into effect at the time, we came to you for the extra funding, there was ninety-nine calls that happened that year. We're currently, as of October thirty-first, at ninety-one. I can tell you, there's a number of times where we went three deep on calls. It just keeps increasing, increasing, increasing. So having that extra funding helps us mitigate those incidents and we've been able to do that very well. But I thought I'd give you that number because that's far ahead of what or we're exceeding what we're going to be last year. We're really up on the numbers in October. I would probably say I, total calls for EMS will be about twenty-two hundred calls by the end of the year. That on another call will probably rise well over a hundred calls and we're on track to take care of this. That's why we're here.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Thank you, Chair. Next up are my liaison positions. Civil Service Commission, we've had no meetings since the approval of the tenants list. We saw the appointment for that this evening. Regarding the Huntington Valley Library, a lot of major events coming up. Check out their website for all the details and information on that. And that's all I have. Back to you, Commissioner, President Kurtz.
Thank you, Vice President Canale. Next is my agenda, Chair of the Internal Affairs Committee. First item on my agenda is review and consider the minutes of October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Board, is there any questions, comments, concerns regarding the minutes?
Make a motion.
No. Okay, we have to ask, does anyone have any public comments? Please come up and address us at the podium.
Mr. Kurtz, I'd like to admit it to reflect that a statement that was made last month by Commissioner Pace on the proportion settlement with the common group was a false statement. There are Republicans, Democrats, and independents that were on that settlement that we signed and gave back to the township. So I'd like that to be added to the minutes or stricken from the minutes. And also it was on YouTube and either we can edit that or put a statement there that that statement that the Commissioner made was false because it wasn't an all Democrat paper that we turned in.
Chuck, the minutes are what the minutes are. Your statement, and and this was a motion on the on the meeting minutes. So your statement will be in the meeting minutes for this meeting. That's all that happens.
What about the YouTube, John? Can a statement be added to that, that the comments that were made in the statement?
No, we don't. We don't edit YouTube. I mean, we we have to prepare meeting minutes. Your your comments tonight will be in the meeting minutes about what was said at the last meeting.
That they were false. They would be in the meeting minutes tonight.
That's your statement will say that, yes.
Okay, all right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDade. We didn't move to those. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been moved and seconded to approve the October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? The eyes have it and we will attach Mr. McDade's comment. Next, review and consider November two thousand and twenty-four bill list. Commissioners, any questions, comments regarding the bill list? None. Or is there any public comment regarding the bill list? Hearing none? Anyone on Zoom, Leah? Good. Okay. Like to make a motion to approve the November two thousand and twenty-four bill list.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the bill list, November two thousand and twenty-four bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you, Commissioner. Next is review and consider proposed twenty twenty-five budget. Manager Hoffman.
All right, so we just have a couple of prepared notes for taking you through what the board's budget process was and ultimately what the recommendation is. So for this evening, there's two items for the board's consideration. The first is going to be to authorize advertising the budget ordinance. Those are all of the specific funding authorizations. I mean, but then consider that at the December meeting. I mean, but then consider that at the December meeting. And then the second item is to adopt the budget by resolution. With that done, we would then post what we'll call the preliminary budget, which updates everything from your budget meetings. We'll put that on the website, that's available here for public inspection. So that before you could go to consider the ordinance in December, that's had the chance to be vetted and would end that process. And then just for everybody's recollection, the board completed its budget review process through three meetings. You had September thirtieth with the community groups, October twenty ninth, which was our departmental review and just an introduction to the budget and capital requests. And then November sixth was the full fund review with recommendations and each fund review included a five-year projection on all funds. So for this evening, want to give a summary of what the recommendations are that kind of follow that, that public meeting process. To then formalize those this evening. So just to, I guess off the top, we're proposing an increased mileage for twenty twenty five in two categories. One in the general fund and two in the fire tax fund, which is part of a four-year plan. I'll get to those specific recommendations last, but just want to do a couple of kind of quick hits from a thirty thousand foot view on the township's other funds. There's sixteen overall, twelve of them are essentially status quo, being able to move forward and all look good through twenty twenty nine. Or have specific things that we have identified for the board to take a look at. So very quickly, the fire hydrant fund that has a specific set mileage of point zero eight two. That revenue is in place to cover quarterly fire hydrant invoices from Aqua, that mileage is good through twenty twenty nine. The trash fund, we've talked a lot about that at these meetings and as well as through the budget process. The trash fee of three hundred and fifty dollars, which is what exists today, that is good for twenty twenty five. This is the final year of our current contract and the fund does project utilizing three hundred thousand dollars from its capital reserve. To be able to offset the cost increase that we'll experience in the final year of that agreement. That was always the plan from when the board adopted or approved the contract back in twenty twenty one. So then our plan for next year is to seek bids on a new five-year contract combining collection and disposal. We will do that in the second quarter next year to hopefully give the board ample time to review the options that we'll put out to bid. We'll bring to you early in the year the results of the poll that has been up for a while. And hopefully be able to correct a bid specification that gives you enough options, gets us enough pricing to be able to work out. All right, with different program scopes, what would the cost be for the trash fee? Does it stay at three fifty, more likely does it have to increase and figure out what the tolerance level is? Finding a sweet spot for what the fee should be and what the program scope should be, so we will do that next year. The library fund that has a specific mileage of point four seven seven that provides for a five hundred and ten thousand dollar operations contribution to the library. That mileage is generally good through twenty twenty nine, but does not consider some potential growth that the, the library may need to see. Just given that expenses do increase. One item to note is that that fund has built up a small capital reserve of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So two things that were listed as concepts on your capital budget requests. Are the entrance doors at the upper and lower levels, as well as the roof and cubula above the community room. Steve will collaborate with Pam Dahl, the director at the library next year to get quotes for those and hopefully bring both of those projects to you for authorization. At a cost less than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So again, neither of those has a specific funding authorization at this point, so we will bring back specific pricing. And whether or not those are available, available through Co-Stars or we would need to bid them, we'll handle that all publicly with the board when we have more information about those. One item that they come up for discussion, but doesn't require any specific funding authorization. Some of like the arch, like architectural features of the library are due for being painted, we'll be able to manage that with our staff. To be able to control the cost on that, so we will need to do that next year as well. Onto the sewer fund, the current sewer rates are sufficient through twenty twenty nine. So that includes back in twenty twenty three when the rates were reduced to be able to pull seventy dollars from the base rate and allocate that towards the stormwater fund. So that plan is continuing to work. Our current capital focus is on the three pump station upgrades. I think we should be closing things up at Longview shortly to move over to Woodland. And then the Halliwell Station will be the third one to go, we know we have a resident meeting to do there before that work can begin. The bid for the Forest Hill Cemetery sewer line repair was awarded by the board, they just did a pre-construction meeting, so that'll get underway. And we just authorized the Bethears Pump Station pump replacement. You had purchased the pump, you had authorized the Co-Stars install contract, so all of that is coming together. And then the next capital project is the Chapel Hill Clarifier repairs. You had authorized soliciting bids for that, we will bring that to the board in December. So that's our current scope of the capital program. We also know that the, just our agreement with Philadelphia is a major component for review. So we will be TVing more lines and getting more information for the board to be able to inform the capital program moving forward. We'll collaborate with the authority as their tapping fee fund should provide the, the next amount of money necessary to, to work on this kind of aggressive capital plan that we've been on. Otherwise, operations with our kind of small but mighty staff of three for the whole sewer system continues to operate the Bethears Pump Station. They operate the Chapel Hill Treatment Plant, maintain our eleven pump stations and maintain the conveying system. Treatment is our biggest operations expense, which is governed by agreements with Philadelphia, Upper South Hampton and Abington. So we are continuing on, continuing on all of that at the current rates and that should be good for a long time. Next one is Parks and Recreation, that has a current mileage of point two eight five. And our premise there is to cover all of our expenses in our parks. There's a couple of other revenues that come in with facilities fees or HVAC, some of our program fees that help offset some of our capital planning. But the, the big idea there is to transfer the fund balance at the end from the Parks Operations Fund to the Parks Capital Fund. And through twenty twenty nine, we can keep making some amount of that capital transfer to help offset the fun things that we get to recommend in the township parks. Next is capital improvement traffic, just wanted to highlight that this is the fund that any of our intersection, traffic signal and pedestrian upgrade projects come from. We've got a major current list of projects that we are working on. And but by the time that is all done, you'll still have about one point nine million dollars to allocate towards these types of projects. Mostly as grant matches through twenty twenty nine. So it's not like there's already a pot one point nine million, but by the time we've done all the projects and allocated, money has come in that is projected for those funds. That's the total you'll have in that period of time. Wanted to point out that current list includes two point eight million dollars of grant-funded projects. That is the five signal upgrades that were completed in twenty twenty four. It is the Philmont and Red Lion Intersection Improvement, which is targeted for the spring of twenty twenty five. Hopefully, being able to, to balance that with the Aqua Waterman Project that will run through August of next year. There's two grants for the Byberry Road sidewalk construction, so that's also targeting a twenty twenty five construction timing. We have another grant for two signal upgrades on Wells Road. And then we also just got the good news that a grant was approved for the preliminary engineering for the Bethears Streetscape. So getting through the permitting of that will allow for an awesome public investment in support of the downtown district. We'll need to seek more construction grant funds, so that'll be a great conversation to have in the future for those who can assist us with that. For the township side, our grant matches are funded through developer contributions from recent development projects. So it's kind of one of the extra things that people may not consider when those projects get approved. There's one point two five million dollars from the Philmont Country Club Development, we already have a million of that. The extra two hundred and fifty thousand will come in in fifty thousand dollar increments that are based off of the number of building permits that have been issued. Also, when Philmont Flats, the BET project, when they sign their development agreement, that will come along with four hundred thousand dollars paid into this fund. And those funds will reimburse more than what we have paid to date trying to move along the Philmont Pine Tomlinson Roundabout Project. So all of the local investment that has been made since two thousand and twelve to move that project along, all of that money will have come back. Through these different grant applications and this financial contribution through that development. So a, a, a major financial benefit there. Onto our regular capital improvement fund, this is funded through a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund into this fund. We also leverage grants, lease purchase agreements and the sale of equipment. To be able to provide all of the funds necessary in this fund. So this year's twenty twenty five capital program includes continued lease payments, the program fees for the two code vehicles that we purchased last year. The sewer truck, which I think should hopefully be arriving shortly, stormwater truck, the tree tripper. The TASER program of being gouged by the company for that. And the police department accreditation maintenance contract that you had approved earlier this year. And then some other highlights are two patrol vehicles for the police department, one for the sergeant group and one for traffic safety. A large dump truck swap loader, which will be our second of those. Right now, the budget forecasts a two hundred thousand dollar DDP nine oh two grant. So if and when we find out we are successful with that, that'll help offset that cost. If we do not get that grant, I have a funding strategy to still be able to purchase that. So that one will work out. Steve's budget presentation had, I think, included a photo of the asphalt roller that from however many years ago that had finally given way. So we will replace that, a new pickup truck for the Public Works Forum with plow. And then also continued allocations to fund specific capital reserves. So that when it does come time to recommend a four hundred and ninety four thousand dollar dump truck, we have the ability to recommend that to you without a panic. Next, onto the Parks and Rec Capital Fund, so again, this is the one that receives the transfer from Parks Operations. This fund tracks the turf replacement reserve and then also provides an unallocated fund balance for the park improvements that we get to recommend. It's also the repository for any of the developer fees for the fees in lieu of open space. Any development that is done in the township that does not dedicate open space to the township pays a thousand dollars per dwelling in it. So those fees cover the Ridgeway Park Playground that was authorized in twenty twenty four. Philmont Country Club is now paid in full, so the hundred and seventy six thousand dollars from that project are now within that fund. And BET will pay two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in two separately installments. Those triggers are based off of submission of building permit and then occupancy. So those fees will be paid before anybody occupies that building.
Chris, did we not include the commercial portion of BET, just the dwellings of the natural units?
Correct, got it. And then. This doesn't include a specific funding authorization at this point, but we're recommending the board prioritize constructing a new park building at Lowermoreland Park in twenty twenty five. Steve's been working on a couple of Co-Stars options to bring something to the board as soon as we can in twenty twenty five. After we have that in place, then other facilities that will look to address the stucco at the Red Lion Gym. Maybe get pricing for that, that's not an overly exciting one because it's more of an aesthetic consideration than a functional one. But something from a building maintenance perspective that may be necessary. And then things that we've just had on for years, there's amenities at Valley Center Park and Ridgway, Lowermoreland Park too, that have the asphalt paths that go around the perimeter of the facility. At some point, we may need to repave those, so this would be the funding source for that. That's a project that to a great extent Public Works can do, but before we would proceed with anything. First, we need to get through the bulk of that kind of aggressive capital plan, see what funds are left. But then bring something back to the board for a specific authorization if we are able to do that in twenty twenty five. This one also offsets some of the things that are in the regular capital improvement fund, anything that is a park's expense. We'll do a transfer from this fund into capital. So some of the things for twenty twenty five that are covered are having a mechanical engineer make recommendations for the HVAC system at the Red Lion Gym. As usual, funds the Lowermoreland Park Pond Treatment that keeps that looking good. And then some things for Public Works Operations this year, a debris bagging system, the wood chipper box insert. I say those words like I have any idea what that means. And then payment two of three for the tree chipper, that was part of the twenty twenty four budget. Then on to our stormwater fund, again, this is where we broke off seventy dollars per quarter out of the sanitary sewer rates. At the point that the, the sanitary sewer system debt was paid off, we had the ability to free that up and create this fund. Is collected through an agreement with the authority. That fund is, is doing exactly what we wanted it to with generating about a million dollars a year. It has some operations components, but the major things are that now with our updated state stormwater permit issued. We have these ten pollution reduction plan projects that we need to do. So this fund will set aside two million dollars between now and twenty twenty seven to do those projects. So for twenty twenty five, we already have Tim Woodrow's office working on the next round of PRP projects. And our goal is to, based off of what we learned from the pricing of the Longview Drive Project, our goal is to do everything that remains on public property. So if it is something that the township either owns or has easement access to or is a school district-owned property. Design the, the scopes of work for those, get the permission of everybody that we would need to, to put those out to bid. And then if it's a property that we own, it would be just like the Longview Project, we'll take on the maintenance afterwards. If it's something that another entity owns, then we would go in, make the capital improvement and have everybody understand what their eventual maintenance requirements are for those projects. But that's part of what we have to implement as part of our stormwater permit. And with the goal specifically of reducing the pollution that goes into our waterways through the township's permitted stormwater system. Other water quality projects that we've talked about with Engineer Woodrow or a streambank stabilization project at Elkins Field. As well as on the opposite side of the street at On Chestnut, a flood plain restoration project of the Huntington Valley Creek area. So we will continue to look at those. This fund also is where I show the grant-funded floodgates. So the grant that we had received for those covers eight of them. Ultimately, what we are submitting to PennDOT for HOP approval are nine locations, the tenth that we had presented. Which was at Philmont and Huntington Pike, there is not physical space to be able to put that at the gas station on the corner, so that one had to be dropped. Steve and I provided comments earlier today to Bowman on the HOP design. So hopefully that'll get through the PennDOT side quickly, we already have the grant agreement signed. So that we have the HOP, Public Works will place the order and do the installations and we will have that project done as soon as possible. Next fund is highway aid, that is where just a hundred percent of the paving projects that we do in Lowermoreland are funded through the liquid fuels allocation. We have an estimate of what that allocation should be, so once we receive that money in early twenty five. That will give Steve the okay to come to the board for authorization to bid the twenty twenty five paving program. In many recent years, we have had collaborations with PICO for Aqua for projects that they had been doing in our local roads. There are no collaboration projects for twenty twenty five. So the paving scope that we had done for about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty four will only be about four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars next year. So the linear footage of paving that we will do will be less, but it's because we're not leveraging those partnership projects. Post-retirement medical is a fund where there are two of our collective bargaining agreements that provide those benefits to retirees. Plan's currently being utilized by two retired police officers, so we will do a transfer from the general fund to that fund to cover the premium expenses there. And the final one, before I get to the two funds making adjustments, is our unemployment compensation fund. Again, that's funded just by an annual transfer from the general fund. But we do track that one because if there are minimal claims or no claims, then we don't do the transfer. So the twenty twenty four budget will have been modified to keep that ten thousand dollars in the general fund, just because it was necessary. So we'll show that for twenty twenty five, but then do that same analysis. So that is all of kind of our status quo funds. Getting into the general fund, this is one where we propose an increase from three point two three to three point four two mils. The board has not adjusted the general fund mileage since twenty twenty one, but we know with the collective bargaining agreements for all of our employee costs. That every year coming back to do the same thing just does cost more money. So for the general fund, the balanced budget that we're looking to do is the combination of cash on hand and revenue is greater than proposed expenses. So each year, our adopted budget shows using significant amounts of the cash that we have on hand. But the goal for any given year is to try to do better than that. So from twenty twenty through twenty twenty three, we actually finished the year with a small surplus. So that cash then goes back into that fund and is able to be used to offset the, the, the kind of revenue to expense deficit that we would have in a given year. In twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, just projecting that deficit that is approved is kind of becoming too great to be able to, to make up for. Twenty twenty four will get pretty close, probably back to about maybe five hundred thousand dollars compared to the one point three million that was approved. So for twenty twenty five, we're showing about one point five million. We know that there's going to be lots of things that happen next year that should really bring down that one point five million. We'll have building permit revenues from the BET projects. We continue to issue building permits for the Philmont Country Club project, there's a hundred and seventy six of those. For de-transfer tax, every time the site developer sells a improved lot to the home builder at Philmont Country Club, we realize de-transfer tax for that. Every time the home builder sells a lot next year to a home buyer, we'll get a second round of de-transfer tax for that. Those are more of the what I consider like volatile revenues where I would never recommend to the board that we rely on them. Because after you have that scale of development activity stopped, there's no way to project them anymore. We just go back to kind of what the status quo of the market in Lowermoreland can support. So I always show the following year kind of back to that status quo and then set up the budget to be able to realize a benefit only if it exists. So because of that, what my recommendation is, is to generate two hundred thousand dollars more of real estate tax revenue in the general fund. So that is where the increase from three point two three to three point four two mils comes from. And just to give a range. And just to give a range, because assessments in Lower Wallen can vary pretty dramatically. Um, if you uh have a house that is assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I confirm there's many of those in in town today. That would be an increase for the general fund of twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Um, our average assessed value is still about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So what we'll have kind of the messaging behind this would be that the increase for the general fund would be about thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Uh, but for more recently constructed homes or homes that may sit on additional property reasons that the the assessed value will be higher. If you're at three hundred thousand dollars, that's a fifty-seven dollar increase. If you're at four hundred thousand dollars, that's a seventy-six dollar increase. So just wanted to have that context of didn't want to be disingenuous and just say two hundred and ten thousand. But we did just get our kind of estimated total assessment from the county. And when preparing the the budget, I tried to take a snapshot of knowing where we are in September of the current year, know what uh. Uh, assessment appeals are going to take effect in the following January and reduce the amount by that. We're actually projecting about a million dollars of assessment too high based off of where the the county projects us. On an individual fund basis, that's such a minimal number that it's not worth adjusting. Um, but just when we we talk about that there is new development happening, oftentimes that's actually just replenishing some of where these. Several but smaller scale assessment appeals do impact the the total um assessed value. Um, so wanted to give you an update about that. So that is where things are for the general. It otherwise projects out all of the collective bargaining based uh obligations that we have. Um, covers all of the administration, police code, fire marshal uh and public works expenses, and then all of those transfers that I had previously described. Then the final three funds we're kind of taking uh as kind of a a plan together. That's the Fire Fund, the Ambulance EMS Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. So of those three, for twenty twenty-five, we're recommending that the Fire Fund increase uh from point six six mils to one point zero seven. So this follows exactly what we have been communicating since the board's September meeting, when Chief Shoemaker went through his emergency services analysis. I first presented what the the numbers we need to be for that at the September thirtieth meeting. Did it again when we had our uh department heads and finished that number again, uh when we had our final budget meeting last week. Um, and the main thing is that that will provide funding to hire four more career firefighters in twenty twenty-five. Um, Chief Shoemaker's already started the process of 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 making those happen so that we can have people on board uh for as close to January first as possible. Um, the ambulance and EMS and uh debt service funds, they can remain at their respective point two four and point seven uh millages respectively. So. Those though are, we're looking really at a four-year plan because of the new expenses in twenty twenty-five. The only new things that the board needs to fund are those four staff and then the first payment on the ladder truck. We know that lots of things are going to to start to hit um in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Everything is contained to the interim recommendations um that the chief and I had presented back in September. So the only thing that this would not cover is if we ultimately identify that increased staffing beyond what has already been authorized. Um, is necessary at some point prior to twenty twenty-seven. Um, but obviously, the the plan is if the board authorizes this with the new staff in place, Chief Shoemaker will be reporting on a monthly basis to see how we're doing against that NFPA metric. Um, and hopefully that's going to last for a good period of time. We'll see what the 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 experience reveals. So looking into that five-year projection, um, we know that there's going to be a next tier of things that start to happen. We're talking about property acquisitions. We're talking about a new fire rescue station. Um, the next uh fire, the engine is going to arrive at the end of next year. All of those things are going to be things that we can act on in twenty twenty-five. But will not start to incur expenses until twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. So we'll be able to refine the general numbers that we are looking at. Um, for what it will cost to fund those things, but we have some good preliminary information. We know what the truck costs. I know what twenty million dollars debt service will be. But we don't know yet what the interest rates are going to be. We don't know if we'll hit some grant funding. We don't know if other things will come together. So I. Also just try to be mindful of uh making sure we've got enough space. So that plan, if we look at those three funds together and the millages that we have today. What we're re- recommending for twenty twenty-five is a combined two point zero one mils. In twenty twenty-six, having that go up to two point two four mils, which would be another forty-eight dollars and thirty cents. In twenty twenty-seven, having that go up to two point eight five mils, which would be another hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ten cents. The implication there is the next component of the construction debt for the new fire rescue station. But what we're doing is leveraging the debt service fund so that some of those increases are offset by. Uh, the increase that we would need to do to fire is offset by a decrease to uh debt service. Based off of the timing of payments in the debt service fund, after there's kind of tough increases that we need to recommend. We would get to do a reduction back down to two point six two mils, which would put that forty-eight dollars and thirty cents back into people's pockets because we'll have accomplished that whole plan. The part that I I I don't want there to be any, uh, I guess misconception about, that's just those three funds together. If there's other increases that we need to consider in that time. I would be presenting this in those future years as kind of the holistic view for the whole township, but looking at those three together to fund this program. Um, those are the numbers that we would be looking at. So. Um, overall, um, that twenty twenty-five millage um would increase uh in twenty twenty-four from five point six seven four. To six point two seven four. So those are just the two increases that you have in the general fund and the larger one that would be in the fire fund. Um, that's an average increase uh of a hundred and twenty-six dollars per. So that is your twenty twenty-five budget.
Thank you, Manager Hall. And then just for clarity's sake, these are just projected estimates, like you said, for grants or whatnot. As things come along, it could, it could change.
In that long-term plan, yes. The numbers that are recommended for twenty-five would be realized.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Manager Hall?
I have a problem.
Yes, you may.
Um. With the de-transfer tax, have we like, you know, has there been like heavier? Uh, transfers or a higher number of transfers in the last like two years and do we? We have any idea on, you know, what that might look like as, you know, not not speaking of the. New construction, but existing homes because, you know, my my gut tells me is that there's a lot of older people. Who are transferring and there's there's houses or something. Are we seeing some of that?
That's actually slowed down significantly.
And that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, so we saw like aggressive sale activity twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. We started to realize a slowdown in twenty-three, but some things kept that going in twenty-four until there were two individual sales. One. Weststrom sold their Crescent Fields property to a different operator. That was a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in a one-time transfer. Without that, we're much closer to the the standard projection rather than what we've had for the last five, six years, which is hundreds of thousands of of dollars of overage in that revenue. So that that's that my main concern is that outside of like a standard market activity. That fund, that that individual account would bring in more like three to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to the six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars we've been realizing. And that is very much a a slowdown of market activity, which probably is the the inventory being less than.
It's fifty percent of what it should be.
Right, so so if I go forward, once some of the construction stops, a lot of these homes that have turned over, it'll probably be slow for a period of time. Is that fair to say?
That's the way that we project the budget, so that if that doesn't happen, we'll realize the the benefit of it. If it does happen, we know what the budget looks like.
It's all going to be interest rates and everything else. We have cuts in the interest rates again dramatically back in five. So you'll see a lot more inventory hitting. You'll have a lot more transfers coming back up. There's already been an uptick in the last week in the market activity.
Okay. Does the, does the public have any comment regarding our twenty twenty-five budget? Anyone in the room?
Sure.
Mark, you can work it down, right, in the balance. Um, my question is. The, um, the the. Amount, the shared amount for the fire EMS. Come uh combination. Uh, I've heard all through these months that it's going to be seventy-five percent. Lower Wallen, twenty-five percent. Shared by Bernathen.
Can I clarify that for you real quick, Mark? That's only regarding Chief Shoemaker's salary? That's not this split that's going down in the middle between two.
Okay, so that's the only thing that that uh that twenty-five, seventy-five, and so that's not involved at all with the.
So essentially you have concurrent budget processes going. Um, so I can't commit on the borough side until they've also adopted a budget. On the committee level, what is being proposed in the Bernathen Bureau budget. Um, is an eighty-five fifteen split on all operations and uh apparatus costs. Obviously, I can't speak for outside of the committee level as to, does that get authorized? Your, the recommendation of that one point zero seven mils for fire. Will cover what we need to do as Lower Wallen Township regardless. If Bernathen does not follow through with the eighty-five fifteen breakdown, then we'll need to also review um those proposed millages for the upcoming years in light of that. Um, but right now their budget reflects an eighty-five fifteen split.
Seventy-five, twenty-five for Mark, eighty-five fifteen for operations and apparatus.
Okay, so uh this is, this is the first I'm hearing about the eighty, you know, I've heard of the eighty-five fifteen.
We talked about it in past meetings, but again, as Chris stated, it's not finalized yet.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a highlight of the three budget meetings.
Okay, Mr. George, regardless, our board, we have a statutory obligation to provide. Public safety to our community. So just to let you know, we, we need to move forward with this to protect our community.
Oh, okay, but it's still okay to ask.
I'm, I'm glad you asked the question.
I use the same question in our.
Yes, yes, Mr. Pasteur.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Okay, anyone on Zoom? Does anyone on Zoom have any public comment?
Come on up, Chuck.
Okay.
He does, right?
Just say.
Chop the cake.
Down road.
Down road. Um, eighty-five fifteen, right? That was the number mentioned at the budget meeting. Uh, what I was.
Operations.
Operations and everything. So that's what the borough hasn't agreed to yet, the fifteen percent, correct?
So they would have to adopt that as part of their budget.
Right, and they didn't do it last month, so this probably will be coming in December.
So in the same way, this board is not yet.
Right, so. That eighty-five fifteen is for the entire four years?
So at this point, we're looking at adopting twenty twenty-five budgets. So the new expenses that we would each incur. Um, a contribution towards the tower ladder, reimbursing fifteen percent of the down payment for the tower ladder. Those are all worked in there. Um, and then for the four new firefighters, that that money isn't part of the overall agreement. We would be each making contributions that are mindful of that eighty-five fifteen breakdown to the organization that needs those to pay them back.
So twenty twenty-six, it can change from the eighty-five fifteen or we projecting that to stay that way in twenty twenty-six also?
I guess, I I don't want to say so specifically. Either party could back out in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So I think it's irresponsible that.
The board can change. So then would it be fair to say that? If we had like a latter effect of a budget here, that it's eighty-five fifteen this year. And then for the township of Low Water, it's eighty percent and twenty percent to Bernathen. And then the third year, we meet our seventy-five, twenty-five percent that we have uh in order with Chief Shoemaker. So. It, our, our Low Water Township percentage has dropped by five each year, while Bernathen's township. Goes up five each year to make that village, as you say, a little lighter for the taxpayers in Low Water.
And that's a cheerful presence.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Can it be opposed?
So anything can be brought by anybody at any time, but what we're suggesting for this year is the eighty-five fifteen, and that's. Broken down based on call volume.
Yeah.
What's going on? So could you bring that next year? You could absolutely bring that as a recommendation.
In the budget meeting, well, I can't, but whoever's commissioners can recommend that, correct?
Yeah, but you can.
And I would suggest that the board justify where those numbers come.
Exactly.
Well, I'm just giving, that's an example.
Yeah, you're trying to speculate.
We're not saying.
Number of calls.
Call volume. Point twenty-five is eight or eight. Eighty-five fifteen, and that's what the Borough Bernathen can afford is the fifteen percent in their budget.
Well, no, based on, the reason we came to this was based on incident numbers, responses, and what the service levels were that we're seeing.
Right, right. The thing that we can sit here and say today is what the borough, what Borough Council is going to authorize for an advertised budget.
Exactly, yeah.
They can pull out a disagreement at any time, so it can, and so, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all litigation to protect safety for the taxpayer.
For Lower Water, not for Bernathen.
Not for Bernathen, right.
Just to clarify.
Right.
Yeah.
So everything goes away, the Federal Mill Fire Department goes away, we go back to Huntington Valley again.
You're missing everything.
No, no, that's so the Federal Mill still stays there.
Federal Mill is designated.
Start Huntington Valley Fire Department.
Adam, Federal Mill is our new fire operations department that will be servicing our communities as of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so we're at eighty-five fifteen this year then, correct?
That's a weird.
That's what.
That's a weird toast.
Yes.
Sorry, I can't get you to bite, can I?
Thank you for coming, Mr. McDavid. Any, anyone online? Would anyone like to make a public comment online? We see any? We don't see any hands?
None, Denise.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank Chris. I know he put a lot of hard work into this and uh wasn't easy, and I know he's been stressed the last couple of months, and I think he did a good job.
Excellent job.
Excellent job on the project. Thank you so much.
We know you love the public.
Oh, yeah, it's my favorite.
Okay, so as Manager Hoffman advised, we have two items for the board's consideration. Uh, they're in our tablet. The first one is authorizing the twenty twenty-five. Tax leaving ordinance for advertising, for advertising. So this could be done. My motion.
Is that the twenty twenty-four?
No, it's twenty twenty-five. That's great years of a type idea.
Well, you. So, right, so I, right, so, okay, so I'll make a motion. To authorize advertising the twenty twenty-five tax leaving ordinance.
Sir.
Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize advertising the twenty twenty-five tax leaving ordinance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner. The next item is consider, is to consider a resolution number twenty-four fifty-three. And that's adopting the twenty twenty-five budget, which Manager Hoffman has described and gone over. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four fifty-three, adopting the twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution number twenty-four fifty-three, adopting the twenty twenty-five budget. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed? Thank you, Commissioners, the ayes have it. Next item on my agenda is Administration Report back to you, Manager Hoffman.
I wouldn't dare. So if there's any questions for my report, I'm happy to address them. Otherwise, I ask that it be accepted as submitted. Second.
Commissioners, anyone? I'm fine with your.
Good.
Okay.
Excellent work.
Okay, next, tax collector report. Uh, I see our elected tax collector, Jane Sale, online. Jane?
Thank you, Commissioner Kurt. I'm actually in the building, but I have hours tonight to collect the taxes, so I am in my office. The um collections for face collection stand at ninety-seven point nine seven nine five percent. Ninety-eight percent is a tough nut to crack this year. Uh, actual collections are ninety-six point two seven, and that does include the um. Discounts and penalty amounts that are associated with the taxes. So the balance due outstanding for the township is one hundred twenty-nine thousand, forty-three dollars even. And the amount due for trash is twenty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars even. Um, the reminder letters were mailed and we have started to get more collections in this week, so we'll see how we go for the end of the year. Are there any questions?
Sale, does anyone have any questions for the tax collector? Does anyone have any public comment for a tax collector? If not, all accepted reports submitted. Thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you.
Welcome to you. From our room. Okay, next is my liaison report. Uh, my positions are Lower Wallen Township School District, Lower Wallen Township School District DEI Committee, and the Community Events. I attended two meetings online. Uh, the the first one was October twenty-first. It was a special meeting. I know Commissioner Canali and Commissioner Halden uh were there in person. Thank you both for going in person. Appreciate it. If anyone else was there, I thank you also. So that was basically um. Uh, a facilities assessment, uh, planning, uh, process, and uh. Uh, company CSI had given some uh objectives for um some. Uh, planning in the uh near future and long-term planning regarding their facilities. So all that is online. It's a pretty lengthy report. Uh, it's L N, W W W dot L M T S D dot org. Next, I attended their school board meeting. It was on November sixth. Next, I attended their school board meeting. It was on November sixth. I attended that online also. And if any of the other commissioners went live, but thank you for going. Um, that was, uh, just most pertinent is, uh, Jamie Lynch from TOWIE gave an update. Uh, recording the PennDOT H O P work, the gas line conflict that they've been working on. And, um, the gas line relocation, oh, by November sixth was, was already ninety percent complete. They were actually scheduled for November seventh, so it's probably done by now. Um, and then with regard to their PennDOT mass arms, you could see the arms across red line with flashing lights. Uh, and flashing beacon arms. It's, uh, they were two, two and a half months ahead of schedule, so they were installed. And they're fully operational, so please take a look when you drive by. I think that's going to be great for the safety of the kids. They also talked about the sanitary manhole change at driveway one, so there, um. That was relocated and inspected by C K S. Um, the township required manhole lining still remains. I know they're working on that. And, uh, just to note, the lining prevents, as, uh, Steve Werner, our Public Works Director, always tells us. Groundwater infiltration in the stormwater system. So their curb line was corrected. There was a little bump out, so they were doing cement work and everything else. Next, with the driveway to the Valley Center Park Drive. Um, they're, they're doing a lot of work there too, so, and their final stage will be, uh, paving and. Uh, some extra signage and some line striping. Uh, they talked about all this work, uh, you know, everything being done by hopefully November twenty-seven. Is their timeline. So I sent the board, um, a download, uh, about everything that they're trying to accomplish. They have some permit closeouts, um. Panoni submitted the NPTES major amendment application for, to MCCD for approval. They revised the permit, showing Murray Avenue School remaining, so this, uh. Is requested for closeout. Their land development permit can be closed after the NPTES permit is closed. Uh, their certificate of occupancy will be issued after the land development permit closes out and the final inspection. Um, just to note, they had one, uh, cost that was a thousand dollars more, but then they think they're going to be getting the ten thousand dollars back. So, um. All wash. Um, and hopefully a little savings to the district and to all of us. So then, uh, Lowermore Township School District DEI, uh, Mr. Cole is working with each school. And he's implementing staff professional development workshops. And also engaging with student groups, everything that the, the group committee, uh, had put into place. They're working on that. He's expanded it. A bit, and I spoke to Mr. Cole, and we should start meetings probably after the new year. Uh, next is community events for the township. October was a really busy month. Um. We started off with, uh, the township, well, Fire Prevention Day, which included the township. We are fortunate that they. Allow us to, uh, take part in it. We have the township open house. Uh, and L M P D was also there. Uh, so that was Fire Prevention Day, October fifth. And, uh, we continue to provide the public with recycled canvas bags. With all kinds of information, emergency management, environmental, educational, and township information. Uh, the kids had a blast. There, we had two hundred pumpkins. Um, they painted pumpkins, they painted birdhouses, and, and it was a really great day. The weather couldn't have been better. Last. Last year we froze. This year it was beautiful. So Fire Prevention Day was wonderful, and I want to thank, uh, Honey Valley Fire Company, Bernathen Fire and Ambulance, and some other neighboring fire companies that were also in attendance. And Public Works. Uh, we can't do what we do for our community without all them. And, and all the commissioners attended, so I want to thank all of you for being there on that day. Our next event was the Trump Retreat, which was held Saturday, October nineteenth. And again, thank Public Works. This event keeps getting better and better every single year. Families and children that drove by had an absolute blast. So I want to thank all our resident volunteers, our board of commissioners. Um, I, I believe almost all of you were there, uh, if not all of you, and, uh, thanks, our assistant Leah Simmons. Thanks, Leah. Because we can't do what we do without you too. And, um, the groups that participated were the Lowermore Township Police Department, the Honey Valley Fire Company, the Honey Valley Library, H V A, Bernathen Fire and Ambulance. Um, Honey Valley Fire Company and the Lowermoreland, um, work commissioners, so. Finally, with regard to events, we did have a, uh, workshop. An environmental workshop that was held at the library by, um. Penn State Extension, um. Robert Pace and our engineer, Tim Woodrow, was there, and it was really. Nice and educational workshop for everyone that attended. Um, and Leah and I are currently working on events for next year, the ACON. And the Earth Day event, so there's a lot of holidays in between, and we're trying to strategically plan that. Uh, but in January for twenty twenty-five, we have our Martin Luther King Day event in coordination with Mr. Miles, the principal at Lowermoreland High School. Uh, for the students to engage in a community service project, so that'll take place. Uh, on January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, so we're looking forward to that. And Leah and I also scheduled the second grade Pine Road, uh, Township and Lowermoreland Police Department tour. So our second grade, uh, tours the township, the police department, and they like to drive around to the works and see historic, uh. You know, homes on, in, in the Village Central, Honey to Pike. There's a new teacher, Dr. Rabat, Rabby, and she is going to coordinate with myself. Um, Director Steve Werner and Leah, so she wants to make it different this year. In touring the township facilities, but make it a little different, like a walking tour for the kids. And it's going to be two days. We're going to, they're going to split the kids up, so it's not so big a crowd. So it'll be April twenty-fifth and April twenty-sixth. It took us a while to schedule that, right, Leah? But we finally had gotten that down. So we have a lot of exciting things happening, uh, in, uh, twenty twenty-five. And that, does anyone have any questions? That will conclude my agenda items.
Nope.
Okay, I'll keep you impressed. Next chair recog- rec- recognizes Dennis Mueller, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, President. Before the, uh, building officials report.
Hello, we had two hundred and ten inspections, sixty-one permits. Um, we are in the process of doing some zoning code, um. And township code amendments that you guys will get sometime next year. Um, updated our violation notices that were pretty old. Me and Ted went to a PASO Fall Seminar. That was really nice. We talked about different scenarios that have come up in other townships and how they've handled them. Um, and then. Bob Shali, Ted, and I were mentioned in an article in the Philadelphia Inquirer for artists for helping them, um, which was very nice, so. We felt famous for five minutes.
I saw that article was very good.
It was very, yeah. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
For my liaison report, uh, there was, uh, no meetings for, uh, the Back Ecological Restoration Trust. They did hold their. Uh, annual gala event that was passed weekend at Karen Wood. So it's a very nice event. And, uh, I would encourage everybody to look for that, uh, next year. They, they do some really wonderful things over there. And then for the planning commission, there was no meeting, no meeting prepared, so that concludes my liaison reports. Turning back to you.
Thank you, Senator Mueller. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works.
Thank you, President Carrick. I don't end this. Public Works, kick it over to Steve.
He has all heart, he talking off, uh, the capital. So thanks for that. Only thing I'll say is that new sleep collection's going. Um, we've been through the township several times, and this is the lead from here on out is when it really picks up, so. That's about it. It's long again.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doing a wonderful, they're doing a wonderful job at the leaders.
Thanks.
Everything else.
Uh, my liaison position is H V A A. Uh, right now you can register for in-house basketball, which will be starting in about a month. Doctors coming to an end. Um, I made a comment to a couple commissioners a week or probably longer than, ago than that, um. About H V A trying to expand their facilities or get more. Park area to play, because they're limited with the amount of kids they have registered versus field space. Um. They like to put some type of lights at one of the parks. They mentioned Ridgeway. They mentioned Lowermoreland Park. I kicked it by the commissioners here, just so they were in the loop of it. There was nothing finalized. It was so preliminary. Um, they did talk to try to figure out some pricing, what it would cost. After talking to Ali again from H V A, it looks like they're not going to go with that idea right now. They're going to continue to try to hope that the school board. Uh, pushes through with the Mary Ave project. Their two hundred fifty thousand is still on the table for the Mary project. Um, that's what they're trying to contribute. They, uh. They don't want to back out from that and try to levy towards another project at this time, so. They're going all in and trying to hope that the school board does something with the facilities over there, which are in dire need, so. That's out of our hands, but I just want to let everybody know where H V A was at with their lighting and field situation.
Um, thank you, Commissioner.
That's all I have for H V A.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Sean Blanton, Chair of the Ordnance Committee. Sean?
Thank you, President Kurtz. First item on my agenda is the, uh, summary and readout for zoning hearing board. So, uh, first, uh, there'll be one application on this month's zoning hearing board, which will be next Thursday, November twenty-first. Uh, this is application number twenty-four dash thirty-three. It's the continuation for seventy-eight Tonelson Road. They're seeking a variance to allow for a parking reduction less than the required midnight spaces. Uh, last month, uh, there were four decisions made, uh, at the October meeting. Uh, first is, uh, application number twenty-four dash nineteen. It's the application of John Brindathew of twenty-four sixty-six Hyde Road. Uh, they sought variances to permit a six-foot tall front yard fence, which was not fifty percent open. The variances were denied. Uh, another application, application number twenty-four dash twenty. This was the application of Ismet Ajvazi of twenty-four fifty-six Hyde Road. They also sought variances to permit a six-foot tall front yard fence, which was not fifty percent open. Their variances were also denied. Uh, application number twenty-four dash thirty-two, the application of Michael and Ellen White. They sought a variance to allow for an increase in lot coverage. To install swimming pool and corresponding amenities. The variance was granted. And finally, application number twenty-four dash twenty-six, this was the application of thirty-four seventy-five H P L L C. It's the gas station on the corner of Byberry and Prince Pike. They saw relief to convert their existing auto bay, uh, auto shop base, excuse me. To expand their convenience store and add a fifty-five square foot vegetable, bestable. Uh, not vegetable. They also sought relief to allow parking production from twenty-eight to twenty-four parking spots. Uh, the relief was granted, however, it was granted with several added conditions, uh, which I'll detail in just a moment. Uh, in addition, uh, the implementation of this plan cannot proceed without land development review, which will come in front of the board commissioners at a future meeting. Uh, just so everyone is aware of the conditions, uh, as set by the zoning hearing board, we'll get to that letter here. Uh, this is a letter that was delivered to us by, uh, Solicitor Begley. Uh, there were five conditions, uh, to this particular, uh, uh, relief. The first two, uh, general conditions that all use in development permitted by the decision shall conform to the exhibit testimony that was presented by the applicant. They can't just do other things that they didn't talk about in the, uh, last month's meeting. Uh, as well as compliance with all applicable provisions for the Lowermoreland Township Code. Uh, and then there were three more specific conditions. One is to prohibit the sale or storage of alcohol products. Uh, one was to prohibit the sale of three products, in particular, Delta Eight THC, Delta Ten THC, and Crado. And finally, uh, the applicant, uh, shall not increase the number of games of skill or chance on the property beyond three. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience, from the community? Uh, that completes my, uh, report on zoning hearing board. Uh, I'm liaison to that and the Building Code Board Appeals, which did not meet, so that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanton. Next, Chair recognizes Commissioner Howson, Chair of the Public Property Committee.
Um, this past month, the Lowermoreland Township Authority met. Um, and we discussed the budget, which, uh, Manager Hoffman has gone over in relative detail, but. Uh, the, the basic point was that there will be no increases projected now or for the next five years, either of the sewer or stormwater floods. So that's good news. Um, the only item that, uh. We discussed that might throw a wrench in things is in Westchester University. Sue to not pay their stormwater fee, um, to the town of Westchester. Um, they claimed that it was a tax. Um, that currently the court agreed, but that's under appeal. We're hoping that that will be reversed on appeal. And we will have no trouble going forward with our stormwater fee, but I thought it was serious enough to bring to the. And, uh, the Historical Architecture Review Board did not meet for any decisions. We did, however, meet, um, to start the, what we're calling the FLAC project. Um, just a quick reminder, that is a project where we're going to research houses that are over a hundred years old in the historic district. Um, and eventually we will create our own little. Tour, uh, historic tour, and the houses will be signified by a black on each house. Um, the owners have to agree, of course, and, um. I have volunteers currently in that. Uh, group who are helping us to do the research. If you know of anyone who would like to volunteer, it is open to the general community. It does not have to be a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. Um, that, that already had two, one of whom seems to be married to me. Um, that are, uh, going to help them with that research, and it's actually going to be kind of fun. And we will be meeting on the months when we don't meet. Uh, here for the Harv, we'll be meeting at the library on the first Monday. So please don't hesitate to reach out to me. My email address is in, uh, on the township website. Okay, does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, I just want to tell you, it's a lovely meeting, and it's very informative.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
You had about four, four, about four planning commission, I mean, uh, hard, uh, commission. Uh, members that really want to get engaged and involved, so, I'm sure anyone's.
Yeah, we have more people that are interested, just weren't able to come to that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that.
That completes my agenda.
Okay. This concludes our agenda items for this evening. Does anyone have any, um. Comments or regarding any non-agenda items for this evening? Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Please raise your hand if you'd like to address the board. Nathan?
Okay.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Chair.
Motion's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.